Time to join us this evening. In compliance with the state government code on open meetings, tonight's agenda has been appropriately posted. These proceedings are being video and audio recorded.
Wait, wait. I think Russ may have not have been ready.
Oh.
It's not being ready.
Okay.
Is your mic on?
Your mic's on.
It's on.
They got little feedback in there.
So I need to speak more into it.
Wait. Maybe something going on with her.
So I need to be a little closer. Bless you.
Bless you. Bless you. I apologize. Excuse me. Wait for him to give the thumbs up.
Can you ask him, is he giving a thumbs up?
Not yet, ma'am. Thank you. Russ, can you hear us? Try it.
Testing, testing.
Yep.
Okay. These proceedings are being video and audio recorded and will become part of Judson's permanent legal record. In order that the tape adequately reflects these proceedings, please silence your mobile devices and refrain from talking while others are speaking. Once again, I extend to each of you a sincere welcome from the entire school board. Thank you for your interest in Judson ISD. We have established a quorum and will do a roll call. We'll start with Ms. Eden.
Present.
Ms. King.
Shetonya King, present.
Ms. Canoyer.
Suzanne Canoyer, present.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Jennifer Rodriguez, present.
Mr. Diaz.
Rafael Diaz, present.
Mr. Macias.
President.
Renee Pichel, present. We do have a quorum. And at this time, we do have public comment. We'll start with Ms. McKenney, president of Judson Education Foundation. Excuse me.
Association.
Association.
I looked at the proposals that the administrations put forth last meeting, and I was appalled. The one that made me the maddest, I think, is the fourth one. Because they've reduced to an absurdity their employees' economic livelihood. Do you realize to go $36 million into the hole, assuming you had 3,600 employees, which you don't, you would be giving everybody a $10,000 raise? That is patently absurd. And yet, that's what they want you to believe. Please don't, don't believe that. Shame on the administration for doing that. Now, if you look at one, two, and three, essentially, I'm reminded of, if you do the same thing over and over, expecting different results, I've been told that's the definition of insanity. And yet, that is what the administration is proposing. You are going to hemorrhage teachers. There's a teacher shortage. There are places to go. You can turn left at O'Connor and 35 and come to Judson. Or you can turn right and make $6,000 more. You can go north and make $6,000 to $9,000 more. Cobham County announced a 4% raise. You've got to at least do that well. You have to make a real effort this time. A significant, meaningful effort. And please don't play the percentage game. Make them tell you what that means in real dollars. I'll tell you what a 2% raise meant last year. $1,140. That's not even $100 a month. Take out, let's, for the sake of argument and math, assume that it was $100 a month. Well, you lose 20 to 30% of that, $20 or $30, to taxes. So maybe if you're lucky, you took home, you'll take home, 80 to 70, $70 to $80. At 8% inflation, that doesn't go far. I have worked for you for 37 years. It's my 37th year. That 2% raise, I am taking home this year $45 more. I'll be here next year, and probably the year after that. But I do, I'm, I'm an outlier in many respects. You've got to do better by your employees. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Clark, wages.
I'm reading from Ms. Karen Clark. She is a proud member of Four Young Children in this district, as well as a contributor to the Judson Education Foundation. And she is also a member of the Texas A&amp;T. Most importantly, she is a school bus driver for the district. Her concerns are the bus driver shortage and propose a 12% step-up in pay. We need drivers. School bus drivers are the beating heart of this district. They transport the most precious cargo our district has. They have done it with a smile and an attitude, and they'll do it again. They love their community. School bus drivers are, at the last meeting was proposed that charter buses be used to transport for out-of-town games. While it is a quick fix, it is a badly fixed that will cause even more of a driver shortage. And your drivers at Judson are just tired. Not only is it out-of-town trips means of making a little more pay, it's also not going to attract more qualified drivers to drive for this district. It will do exactly the opposite. We need support and pay, and that will only, not only fulfill most vacant positions for the school bus drivers, it will bridge a gap so that many of the current drivers are still struggling when it comes to pay. The inflation that the U.S. has experienced has caused a lot of hardship and has hit school bus drivers extremely hard. We are all now in minimum wage, and it's leaving everyone, all fellow drivers, in a place where much as we, you know, they love being a school bus driver and are fighting to stay and fighting to work two jobs and running a household, and it's extremely hard and trying to stay in the district and be a taxpayer. We're also coming up short. We're also coming up short so that coworkers still have to use food pantries. These, these are family drivers. What do we do to protect our drivers? And during the summer, they're not able to collect a paycheck as much because of shortened hours. We're asking you to please invest in your bus drivers and assistants. We need more drivers, and we need your help because we have staff shortages everywhere. And for the reason these students are showing up late to school, costing them more learning time, and possibly affecting the STAR testing scores as well. We need you to, our board members, to get behind us, and please do right by the drivers that have been here through thick and thin and are still trying to stay here and support our district. Thank you for understanding. We appreciate you and hope you'll please consider this proposal.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Chris Rowan, wages.
She's unable to be here. She's also bilingual speaker. She asked if I could read for her.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with all of you about some concerns I've been experiencing as a bus driver in this transportation department. My name is Christine Rowan, and I am a proud A&amp;T member. I am 57 years old and lifelong resident of this district. I need a job with a livable wage. I want to stay in this district. Unless Judson can pay to keep experienced drivers like myself, I am searching for better paying jobs. Judson School District used to be referred to as a premier district, a leader, not a follower. Currently, everyone awaits until the last minute to see what other districts are doing, are going to do before committing to anything. Why are we no longer a district leader? Our transportation department is critically short of professional commercial drivers. There are about 95 routes and only about 70 drivers approximately. Retention will only happen if our pay scale is competitive. We are overdue a significant inflation increase of at least 12%, with a 3% to 4% step pay increase. Inflation is rising faster than our income. As a CDL driver since March 2019, I am suffering the short salary of $1,573 an hour, of which every two weeks I must ask family members to help me cover my monthly bills. And it does not even include gas and groceries. At my current income level, without field trips, I am contracted to make about $17,000 a year, and yet cannot get approved for food stamps assistance. To help make ends meet, I had to trade my 2013 car that I really enjoyed for an older car with higher mileage just to get a cheaper car payment. I had to go get in line for food, food lines because when I attempted to apply for food stamps, I was turned down because of my hourly rate at work. Any income over $10 an hour in the food stamp office believes you make too much money. I'm concerned because it's summertime. There are fewer hours and less workdays. Yet, we are contracted to work in August. In the meantime, just go to food lines and get whatever they give you. And, you know, let's be honest, she says about $0.30 or $0.40 more an hour is really nothing that's going to help anything. I will never be able to afford to save up for a real home. It's supposed to be the American dream. I currently live in a mobile home that is desperate need for repairs that I cannot afford, can't even save enough for month-to-month. And pretty soon, I will need more repairs as well. Please consider a decent wage. Thank you.
At this time, I'm going to turn it over to you, Dr. Ball.
Thank you, board. Thank you, board, for being here tonight. We're going to continue to discuss our budget, so everybody should have a handout. And, Mr. Atkins, I'll turn it over to you so we can continue.
Thank you, Madam President, Board, Dr. Ball. I think this is our third budget workshop. I don't know, but I think it is. And I do want to thank Mr. Scott Stevens. He looks at spreadsheets all day, and sometimes he looks cross-eyed during the day. So tonight, we'll start looking at our mission, vision, and goals. Just a reminder of what we have out there and the board's goals. We'll talk about, we did get values from the appraisal districts, so I'll share that with you. We'll look at revenue projections, again, review budget assumptions, review some of the budget items that we went over in April, discuss compensation, which I think is the main topic, and then discuss budget, and then how we move forward. So, Burt County, on the 27th of April, did release 85% values. And so, you can see there, I'm projecting that we're going to end up with a value of about $14.7 billion, which is an 18% increase. But you can see, as you go across, whether it's a 16, what our tax rate will do as far as it compresses, because it's the M&amp;O, we have a limitation of 2.5% that we can actually count in that value. On the next page, you can see what the value is. Right now, I'm projecting about $14,783 million would be about where we land. And, again, we would compress our tax rate about 15 cents. And, again, if we want to do some defeesance, we can defees and pay off some additional debt, if that's what we want to do. Our tax rate history, I have the tax rate history there. Right now, I'm proposing that we have a tax rate of $1.20, which is a 7 cent reduction in the tax rate, and still allows us to defees about $30 million in additional debt and save $14 million in interest payments on that debt.
I might have one later. I'm still thinking. Like, I'm, I'm, no, no, like, keep going.
Process.
But I'm taking a moment to understand.
Write it down. So, again, I haven't really changed any of the budget assumptions except for the taxable value, and I just rounded it up. Again, I'm looking at $1.20 with about .76 on our M&amp;O side and about 43 cents on our INS side. One of the things that, you know, we do have a fund balance, it's an unassigned fund balance of $106 million. We do have, in that $106 million, we have $8.1 million that is for our workers' comp and for our self-funded health plan. So that takes us down to about $98 million. Now, one of the things that fund balance is used for, some people think fund balance is locked away, we don't ever touch it. Unfortunately, the way school districts are funded through the state and through taxes, there's three different types of school districts, and we're a type 2, tier 2 district. And so, our funding comes in, we get a few payments, three payments upfront, and then we don't get any payments for November, December, January, February, March, and then I think in April, we get a small payment, and we get some taxes. But what I've tried to show here is our cash flow. And so, the dotted line is our revenue, and you can see that when we first start out the school in July, that we're running a negative cash flow. And of course, then, in November and December, really mainly December and January, we get our taxes in. So our cash, our revenue's above what our cash flow is. But then, we have those months where we don't get a payment. And so, we're going in and out of fund balance to make our monthly payments, our payroll and our expenses. And, and so, it's kind of like if you have a savings account tied to your checking account, and if you go over in your checking account, it automatically debits from your savings account so that you don't get a charge, right? So that's really what we're doing. And so, here's the actual, the cash flows that we have. And you can see on the left side, that's our revenue, monthly revenue. And then, the blue next to it is whatever our expenditures are in those months. And then, you can see the difference in the second green column. That's just revenue versus expenditure. But the third green column is the cumulative effect of cash flow. And so, you can see, in the month of October, and this is actual numbers from 20, 2021? Yes. In October of 2020, we had a cumulative net cash flow of $27 million. So we were into fund balance $27 million. Again, that, that settles up, and it did this year at the end of the year, but every year, that goes into it. And districts, like I said, it just depends. If you're a property wealthy district, you get 80% of your state payment upfront, and you get 20 in August. If you're a property poor district, poorer than us, we're kind of in the middle, you get a payment every month, except for August and April. And that's just how the state tries to help different districts, because, you know, your property poor districts don't bring in as much taxes, right? And your property wealthy's bringing a lot of taxes. So that's how they, they kind of help them out. So, looking at our fund balance, you can see I've taken out the $8 million. So we have about 98. 8% of that is reserves. And then, we have $1.9 million that is assigned. And that is because, that is the liability we have on our books for our compensated absences. So when people retire and we pay their compensated, you know, their absences, their leave, that's the liability that we calculate. And then, we have restricted, and these are some contractual obligations that were on the books at the end of June 30. Probably some of them have been taken care of by now. And then, we have non-spendable, which is like our inventories in our warehouse. So, it's counted in that $110 million, but we really can't spend it.
Phil, which, which piece of the pie is, does wages come up?
Well, this is fund balance.
Oh, just, just?
This is just fund balance.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I was just trying to break down all the different pieces of fund balance that we have. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Atkins.
Yes, sir.
So if we fundamentally agree to continue to keep three months of our fund balance or payroll in, in there, which I think we talked last month, last week, and we estimated roughly 40 to maybe 45 million of that is three months' worth of compensation to kind of ride through this, then we should be okay, right? There shouldn't be an issue with cash flow if we committed to keeping three months' worth of salary in the back.
As long as we don't have a major disaster, because our insurance, property insurance deductible for wind and hail is $5 million.
So if we don't have, like we did some years ago, where we had hail damage. Well, I don't think when we had a meeting last week, we wanted to spend all of our fund balance.
Correct.
So, so, three months, I say to stay with that, we obviously will spend, I think we talked about $20 million in terms of what we would at least consider, so that should still leave a healthy amount in the fund balance. So if I go back to your audit fund balance today, $98 million, basically, if we were to take the 20 and spend it, we're not sure yet, we've got to go through this process.
Yes, sir.
But which would mean, leave $78 million in fund balance right now?
Right.
Which still, all that $45 million that we're estimating for three months, and still have a reserve part for us to continue to use.
Correct.
So we should, we should be in good shape.
Should be. Yes, sir.
Just wanted to, that's the change that I was about.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I guess, we had that in there twice. So we did, we had some questions from our last workshop. One of the things was a list of teachers by years' experience. We talked about adding aides in grades K through 2 and 3 and 5, so we have that for you. We talked about a 5% raise for teachers and an auxiliary paras professional raise of 4%. And I know that came out to a, a negative $36 million, and that's not all raised because part of that is already, we're in a deficit without giving a raise. So we're in a deficit budget without even giving a raise. And then, of course, review the bus driver pay. So here's our teachers by years. We have 1,648 teachers. They're about 50% of our employees. We have a little over 3,400 employees currently, and I don't, we have quite a few vacancies. Yes, sir.
Forgive the question right now, but looking from your items from April budget, is that sort of our agenda today? We'll be looking at those?
Well, yes, we've tried to put numbers to some of those.
Okay.
And then, we also have some, some other options that we're looking at.
Well, I just wanted to just, I guess, reaffirm, are we looking at staggered salary increases in this as well? The, I think I made a recommendation for admin to be at 2% or?
Correct.
Yeah, so is that also?
Yes.
It's in here, so we'll get to that too.
Yes, sir.
Fantastic. Thank you.
So, if we look at adding aides at 3rd and 5th grade, that would be 165 additional aides. At K-2, it would be 233. And when we take in full cost of an aide, it's roughly about 30, depending on, on their years of experience. So adding them at 3rd and 5th would add $4.9 million to the budget, and adding them K through 2 would add $6.9 million to the budget. And so, that is just some of the numbers we put together there for you. So looking at some of the compensation items, I'm really not going to go over option 1, 2, and 3, and 4, because we kind of went over those last week unless you'd like me to review those. Because a couple of you were not here. If you'd like me to review those, I certainly can.
I would like to.
Yes, ma'am. So, option 1 is a 2% raise on the mid with an incentive for bus, all of these have an incentive for the bus drivers in it. And all of these would have the ESAR incentive that we gave last December. So all of these options have that in there. And that, that brings us, with the campus allotments and that kind of stuff, to about a $10.6 million deficit. The option 2 is a 2% on the midpoint for teachers and a 3% mid for the auxiliary and paras with an incentive, again, for the bus drivers. And that would bring us to a $10.9 million deficit. Option 3 is a 3% raise with adjustments in the incentive. This is pretty much the Tazby model that we, Tazby presented earlier in the year. They were adjusting the teacher scale to make sure that we were above the median, and then they made some adjustments in some of the other scales. And that would be about a $12.8 million deficit.
When you say deficit, is that just the compensation portion of the deficit, or that's the total deficit, including?
That's, that's the total deficit. Yes, ma'am. Option 4 was giving the big raise, and I believe, Scott reminded me, this is a 5% for teachers and paras, and I think a 4% for administrators?
Option 4 is the one where we put the scale to $20.
Oh, that's right. It's the, it's the minimum starting wage of $20 an hour. And that's the big one that takes us to about a $34 million deficit. Option 5A is we're adding aides at 3rd and 5th, a 1% raise, and a bus driver incentive that takes us to about a $14 million deficit.
You said a bus driver incentive?
Yes, ma'am. We're going to propose an incentive for bus drivers. It's a couple slides down the road.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Option B is adding paras in K through 2 with a 1% raise for everybody and bus driver incentive. And of course, again, all of these have the ESAR incentive, that bottom line there that's Option 6 is a 5% raise for everybody except professionals, and that would be a 4%. And again, it has the bus driver incentive, and that takes us to about $22 million deficit. Option 7, which is kind of one I like, because all the other options add salary that in the future, we're going to have to?
Continue.
Contend with. Yes, ma'am. So what, and I'm going to, if it's all right, I'm going to skip a page and talk about the incentives and then come back to this. So let's talk about the teacher incentive. So when we talk about the teacher incentive, what we're proposing is that all teachers would receive a $1,500 incentive, and we would pay it out 500 in December and 1,000 in June. In addition, teachers that teach STAR or EOC could earn additional stipends or incentives based upon performance. So if they had a T-test rating of proficient or above, and on the STAR or EOC, 70- So if they had a T-test rating of proficient or above, and on the STAR or EOC, 70% of their students met grade level standard, or 80% of the students met growth measure, if you were a teacher with one to two years' experience, you could earn an additional $1,500. Three to five years' experience, an additional $3,000. And six-plus years' experience, an additional $4,500. So the potential for a teacher to get $6,000 in incentives. The bus driver option, and we know, like I said, again, the winter retention, if they were employed with us on Sept, yes, ma'am.
I don't, sorry, I don't know if it's important to have mentioned on this one, just for a little bit of clarity. This is just for what we would consider core teachers.
Correct, correct. The bus driver incentive, if they were employed with us on September 1st, and they worked through December 1st, in December, and in 95% attendance, the December, they would get $1,000. And then if they are employed with us in January, and they work through May, then in June, again, 95% attendance, they would get an additional $1,000. So those are the, the two things that we're talking about as far as incentives for those hard-to-fill areas. So going back to option seven.
Let me ask you about the bus drivers.
Yes, sir.
You have here 105, and I think at our last meeting we had 90, and then, of course, we have 77 that are actually in position right now. So where's the 105? Is that our projected need?
Yes, that's the number of positions we have open.
Okay, so we're, we could actually get to 105 rather than 90, whereas, why did I hear the number 90? Remind me that, because remember, we talked about how many we had, which is 77.
I think we're talking about routes.
Okay.
90 routes. But we need to have drivers that, when somebody's out, they have a driver to fill in. We have drivers that do mid-days, and so.
But those would obviously be different salaries, right? We wouldn't.
Sure, they're all the same, bus driver salary.
So I know Dr. Fields used to be back there in transportation. Do the bus drivers who we'd have as extra just sit in, in, in the room, or what happens with that?
They go out.
They go out.
And then sometimes they go out, come back and go right back out again because it's not.
Okay. We may not need to use it here, but this sets in, in a path, a question I'll have later. And that's if, if we're budgeting for 105 bus drivers and we have a 77, that budget allocation for compensation is going to be much, it's almost double, almost, in terms of, well, not double, but significantly higher. And so when we're passing this budget, we're going to approve it for 105 bus drivers. We can't even fill 90, as far as I know, we're at 77. So when we're trying to really be strategic with our budget, 105 may not be realistic in terms of really having that out there. So when we have program reviews, we can talk more about what, why we want 105 bus drivers as opposed to 75 or 90 that we, or 77 or 90 that we've worked with. I don't want to inflate this budget with positions that are unfilled. I spoke with our AFT unions and our TSCA unions, and one of the questions is that we have all of these budgeted items for unfilled positions that we have either difficulty or we don't, we don't put in, so they're in our, in our payroll system without them being filled. We may need to really reevaluate the need for those positions if they are continuously unfilled, and maybe even have a freeze for moving forward, so that we can save money in this budget for this next year, because I think that's part of what I would imagine your duty would be in terms of evaluating our personnel. So I'm telling you, we, this 105 is going to impact things. You want to say something, so tell me.
Well, I just want to say, pre-COVID, we were at 126 drivers. And so we're, we're hoping that our numbers come back. Now, the problem is not finding drivers. Hopefully, the incentive would encourage drivers to, to stay with us and come and work with us, because we could definitely use more drivers. And if we get to that 105, then it's much easier not to use the charter buses, because we do have drivers to put on a bus at the end of the day that's not running a route. And so, and a lot of times, drivers act as monitors if we have a bus that's having some discipline issues, and we don't have a monitor to put on there. So they stay busy.
Well, in my humble opinion, we passed that half a million for that potential. We're hopeful that it'll basically transfer from that budget back to personnel. So we have half a million, that's, that probably could fill that gap by itself, I would imagine, in terms of 78 through 105 bus drivers.
But that's apples and oranges, Mr. Masias. We're talking about those drivers who are only doing out-of-town runs for student events. That's not a day-to-day bus driver to come in and take over when somebody's out sick, or, you know, we, you know, we, we have a sudden influx of a new apartment opening, and we need more drivers for that. So, you know, if we, if we have 77 now, we're in dire straits. We need to shoot for getting more bus drivers, and we need to allocate for it, because if we do these incentives, if we do increase the pay, it's quite likely we will get more drivers.
And Mr. Atkins, did I misunderstand you? 105 bus drivers would take away the need for the bus driving?
I'm not going to say 100%, but it would. It would definitely help, believe me. It would definitely help.
I, I heard.
Yes, sir.
We wouldn't need them. So that's why I'm thinking, well, great, we have half a million we can reallocate. So now I need to understand that better, too. And that's, that's kind of detail I'm going to want this budget cycle to really get to the bottom of how we cannot be in a negative $36 million deficit. And if it means unfilling positions, because realistically, if we can't fill positions now, we'll do what we can today, but we may need to go into a mode of operation that's going to work with what we have. And so retention needs to be paramount right now. We need to bring these people back and pay a decent wage. So that's what I'm thinking about more than I am, because we haven't filled positions. And we are suffering in the classroom with meeting teachers. So we need to think strategically now about how we can fill that and not inflate our budget with positions that we may never fill. We hope to, and if we get to that point, we have fund balance money that can say, hey, guess what, we put it out there. But in this vein, we have half a million from when we passed last month, that I feel we can bring that over to this, just, you know, reshape things.
If we have the 105 bus drivers.
Yeah, if we get to 105 bus drivers.
Correct.
So anyway, I apologize, but it, it caught my attention when I saw that, and I just remembered different numbers earlier. So, thank you.
So, one quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, if we budget for 105, and we currently have 77?
77, yes, ma'am.
Okay. The difference in that money from 77 to 105, how long does that money that is budgeted to be used for bus drivers, how long does it sit there before it can be reallocated for a different purpose? I hope I'm asking that question right.
No, I understand. You know, we would, it can sit there all year, and we never reallocate it, and we never spend it. Or it could sit there, and if fuel goes up and we need to move some to cover fuel costs, we would cover fuel costs. We try and budget enough where we don't have to do that, but it definitely would be. I, I wouldn't, and, and totally up to the board, but I would rather have a budget that hopefully I can fill those drivers than budget for 77 and then have to come back and ask for additional funds later on, because we hired 90. Right.
No, and I understand that part. I was just wondering, how long does that money stay there, you know, before, you know, would that be part of what we would use in the compensation package?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that why we break it down like that, you know, from this point to this point, and then the following month you get the $1,000?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that why we do it that way?
Yes.
And as well as trying to keep control of the budget?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, because I just need a little clarification.
And Mr. Atkins, no disrespect to you with this, I know you deal with finances all day, but we pass a lot of amendments throughout the year that go into our fund balance for whatever purpose. So for the sake of this budget cycle, I want to try to trim it early with realistic projections. And for example, we want 100 bus drivers, let's continue to work towards that goal, but know more realistically, we're probably only going to fill 90, because we already have, again, half a million sitting there for reserve. So we were told 90, if we get to 90, we can cover all the routes, and that would make things better, but that's 15 more routes, and so now I want to understand where 15, I know you said they're backup and all that kind of stuff. But we pull from fund balance, so don't, I mean, just know that's why it's there for us to make adjustments. And for the sake of passing a balanced budget, I'm open to putting those things aside and just trying to really project what the reality is, in an effort to eliminate payroll positions that never go filled. Because again, I know we, I will, we'll get to it, but we do use consultants for services when we can't find a position to fill. Am I correct? So we have a consultant budget, I don't know if we shift it in what that works, but we get to that part of the budget, I'd like to understand that better, because I know we have it in our budget, and a compensation plan follows with it. So anyway, as I guess, you can continue, sir, thank you.
So option seven, on the previous page, would be a 1% teacher raise across the board with the incentive that we talked about. So all teachers would get a $1,500 stipend, or incentive, I forgot what I said. And then they have the option to earn additional incentives based on the performance. A 3% auxiliary and para raise, and a 2% professional raise, and again, the bus driver incentive and the ESAR incentive. And that takes us to about $18.8 million. Again, option eight is the exact same thing, except it's a 2% teacher raise, and that takes us to 20.4 million. These two options I like, because the incentives drive performance, they drive attendance, and if need be in the future, they can be taken away. About $8 million is tied up in incentives in these packages.
Is any of that from the, the TEA? You know what I'm talking about, the?
Well, we won't be able to get the teacher incentive allotment until '24, '25. But when we get it, it could carry these on. Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, can, can you share with us?
TEA provided funding in the last, or has proposed funding, possibly, after these last two amendments passed in the election, we'll see if there's any money in the pot for it. They, to do a teacher, what's it called?
Incentive allotment.
Teacher incentive allotment.
Yes.
Which would be the, the, the district would be able to write the specifications of how that would be allocated, but the money would come from the state, extra money, but not, as he said, till '24, '25.
Okay. And it won't be where, like they do now, if, if, you know, if they give us more money, then they take more?
This would be a separate kind of funding.
Yes, this would be on top of our regular funding.
Okay, like the way that sounds.
Yes, ma'am. So, and some, some of the districts are already doing that.
Yeah.
But in the application and COVID and stuff, we're in that, I think cohort F.
They're applying for it, or prepping for it?
No, I believe, I think Harlandale is one district that already has that.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Atkins.
Yes, sir.
I, I recall, and again, if it's in here, just, just tell me, hey, Mr. Masias, we're getting to it. But specifically, I did request that we look at a compensation plan that has a 2% increase for employees that make $80,000 or more, that teachers, 60,000, 50,000, that they make 5%, and that if you are making less than $20 an hour, or in that ballpark, a 7% increase. Is that in here?
It is not in there. I'm still, I'm still calculating that one.
That's going to be important to me, because that's essentially the differential I'm looking for to really evaluate, are we able to do that, so that we can work on, on strong retention? So 5% just based on employees that fall within our entry-level teachers, of 50,000 to say 70,000 or whatnot, that's one segment. And then if you're making 70, 75, 80,000, a higher, you know, it's 2%. Those are different numbers than a blanket percentage, which would change all of the totals. And then if you are on the lower end, I'm almost confident if you're custodial staff or bus driver, that a 7% increase would be substantial in my book, which I love your ideas for incentives, but if we can fit that into the raise, that's more permanent. I know it's more long, but it might be what we need right now in a very competitive environment. So without that, I mean, I, I love these options, but we're going to spend a lot of time on this without getting to what I requested.
And I will have that for you Friday. I just wasn't able to finish it, because I have to go person by person and actually do the calculation based upon the criteria that you kind of set forth.
Yes.
So I will have that for you Friday.
But I thought it was broke down in by earnings, you know, just like, like, when you look on this page where it says, I think we have, oh, yeah, 105 new teachers.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so 105, that's their group, because they all basically are coming in unless they have a lot of experience, at about the same pay grade, right?
One more time. One more time.
Okay. 105 new teachers.
Yes, ma'am.
These are, these are not all just out of college, so I'm sure some of these are coming to us with experience, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So they would be making more money out the gate.
But that, that chart is actually broken down by their years of experience. So we have 105 teachers that we hired this past year that had zero years' experience.
Oh, so these aren't?
And then you can see the, I think it's one to five.
Okay.
And, and so, you know, we do hire the different, different areas there, but the 105 came to us, they may not have been right out of college, they may have been coming from an alternative CERT program or something.
Okay, okay. But isn't that how you were kind of breaking it down, Mr. Masias?
No.
Like earning?
It couldn't go either way. Essentially, my initial thought was just look at the, the salary differential and break it down by how much they, they make, and add a percentage based on where they fall. That's what I was talking about. I just don't know, I keep saying 24,000 in my mind for, for the professionals that are paid the least, but then I also play around with the idea of $20 an hour, 20, anyone under that, that would capture par professionals, transportation, custodial. And that's sort of what I was asking for, because I do want to pay, and at least examine, a 7% increase for those salaries in that ballpark.
Right. What I remember and what I'm calculating is, anybody that makes less than $20 an hour would be a 7% increase. Teachers and paras that were above $20 an hour would be a 5% increase.
My, and again, I don't have this data to even look at right now, but yes, that's the idea.
And then administrators could be, well, 2%, okay. I'll have to go back and recalculate.
For right now, I just, again, that would been, that's what I'm looking for specifically. All these other options are very good, and I know are needed, but that's, I remember asking for specifically.
Yes, and, and like I said, I'm, I'm working on that, my spreadsheet is, is up and ready.
And, and the other thing I haven't seen, and it may have been in our Friday notes, I'm one Friday note behind, Dr. Ball, so please forgive me, I'm still, but I did request title and ESAR budgets, because I want to get an idea of where personnel is being allocated in those budgets, so that we may be able to shift some of the title to teacher aides, because this six, almost 7 million price tag, it's a lot of money. And that's a compounded strategy for the next three years. We're going to commit to a two- or three-year plan at whatever we commit to, and that just, that just takes from our fund balance.
We're working on those budgets until we, it's hard, because those budgets are smaller programs, and so much of it is already tied up in compensation. And not knowing which option I'm kind of, going to kind of go with, it's hard for me to calculate how much is going to come out of each program for, for compensation.
What I'm going to ask Dr. Ball.
So we, I just want to, so we did put in the Friday note.
Okay, so I'm one behind, but, but, that's why I say that, because you do that to me a lot, and that's good, because I'm just behind. But what I'd like to see is, is eventually, we're looking at every position and its return on investment in the classroom. What is it doing to truly move the needle, and how do we identify that? Because that's where we'll be able to cut fluff out, that, you know, we can't show what it's doing to improve student performance, then we may need to really evaluate the merits of that position. So that's a long-term strategy in study, but something that I think we need to do. But as we get there, the title funds that we have, I'm going to counter with your recommendations on the pre-K through two and the thirds or fifth, that we look at campuses that are overcrowded first. We look at that where we have capacity problems, and then we, we can't fill them all, because it's, like I said, this price tag's hefty. But if we look at the schools that are full, or beyond, that's where the teachers need the most support. the most support. So we would cut out schools that, that have a more controllable crowd. The intent is to lower the teacher classroom ratio and give support for students on those campuses. So, Dr. Ball, that's what I would be asking to modify this initial request of what it would look like, to make it more manageable and controllable to, to implement this strategy.
Only the campuses that are at capacity?
At a capacity, yes, first. I mean, that may, I mean, we won't, we won't need 233, and now if they find we're all at capacity, then we really got, really dig deep here. But that would be my next recommendation to evaluate that, to see what we can do, if anything in that area.
I would just remind everybody, though, we also have about $20 million in payroll and ESRA funds that we're going to have to deal with in two years.
Yes.
In fact, I'm going to have to pull some of that back this year, just because, or we'll run out of ESRA very quickly.
And as I pledged, I will now ask for every position, what that return is, so that I feel like we've done our due diligence to evaluate the need for positions. And I'll, I'll just give examples. I mean, I hear a lot of feedback about certain positions not being needed, and, and so I'm not the expert, you guys are, so you would need to go back and evaluate, Mr. Macias, without this position, this is what would happen. And secondly, we've overloaded our employees in certain roles, so we need to find out what we can do to make life better for them too, as we're doing this study and their value. So I, I feel, again, this is a lot of work, a lot of work for administration, but work that we need to do.
Absolutely. I would, go ahead.
And the HR committee that we have established as a board committee that we'll be rolling out, will probably look at some of these things as we continuously put a focus on that.
Right. So one, a couple of things in regards to, I'm not sure we have any fluff positions because, you know, our teachers are taking on a lot, so I would definitely love to know which ones are considered the fluff position so we could look at that. Then we also have a required to by law to have some positions because we do have to provide our students the tutoring if they failed. So we can't rely just on summer school for doing that because some of our students aren't going to come to summer school. So we have to do that, you know, either during the day, after school, before school, and different avenues. So some of the positions that we have, whether we call it the RTI or the interventionist, we do have to have some of those positions so we can provide those services.
Respectfully, I never even said we should look at RTIs.
No, 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 I'm just giving some examples.
I know that we need RTIs. They're very important. I may be looking at academic deans. I may be looking at positions of what are they doing that's going to truly move the academic needle? So not all academic deans are created equal, so they're all doing different things. So is there a district standard for these positions? Are they doing the same thing on campus? There are variables there. So again, I'm not the expert, I might be wrong, and I'm welcome for you to come back and tell me this is what we're doing there. But without a deep study of that, I can't give you any more than just that sense. I mean, and you're going to say, I would expect you to say, all positions are valuable, all employees are, but if we're trying to be proficient, if we're trying to really figure out where they're making the student achievement gap being closed, that's where we need to be strategic. Because right now, I am fearful that our district will not be sustainable if we continue to go this path. Our payroll percentages go up annually, and before you know it, we're going to be in the 90 percentile of our compensation plan going to employees. It's going to be difficult for us to maneuver unless we have some strategy. So we need to focus on academic performance, which again, we all know that's why we're here. But what, what, if any, is there room to move or adjust or address?
Right. I only mentioned RTI only because I didn't know which ones.
Yeah, like, no, I know RTIs are extremely critical, I want more of them.
I mentioned that, and I share the same exact fear that you also share because 20 million this year could very easily mean 20 million next year and the following year, and there goes the district's fund balance.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I share that exact same fear.
And so doing things that we've discussed here at the board level, redrawing lines, looking at the sincerity of have to close a school, I mean, any of those things that are reality, because now we have, we don't, we won't need another principal, and that's salary that we're saving. So it, it's time to look really hard at those things. And collaborations, partnerships that we've talked about too, to help alleviate some of the challenges that we have in our budget. It's very frustrating, every year I come into a budget, this is my 11th or 12th budget cycle, and we're always at a deficit. Never once, we're sitting great, it's always a deficit, which means to me, we're always going to be in this paradigm. We, we can't be that way five, 10 years from now. We have to be better, and it starts with identifying positions, HR playing a big role in now starting to identify what's going to work and what doesn't, and what do we need to adjust.
Right, absolutely, because we also look at it long-term wise, that we never want to be in a position of having to do a RIF.
Yeah.
And I know that the board would never want to be in that position either. So I think that some of you might have already experienced that.
I have.
And it's not a fun thing to have to experience, so this isn't something that we take lightly. So I'd like to go back just to make sure, I think that what, what I'm hearing from you is in regards to some percentages that I wrote down, and Bill has the five, two, and seven, okay, to bring you back that information. Could I hear maybe from the rest of the board if there's any questions?
I have a concern about that particular model and what it does to our salary schedule. We've worked really hard to make sure that we have fair and even steps between years of experience, and something like that would really totally blow it up. And I, I really do have a, an issue with looking at something like that.
Yeah, you know, I think that was one of my concerns is it's going to compress the scale.
Yep.
On the bottom level, and I know not giving raises four years in a row before we got here also compresses that scale. And you can see that in our bus driver scale. And so, yeah, it, it really makes it difficult to look at somebody that has one years, two years, three years, and they're making just about as much as somebody that has seven, eight, nine.
Right.
And, and so it's, it's, it does draw things.
Well, I would imagine, and that too hasn't been addressed year to date, but my expectation is in any of these options, I will ask if we've made those compensation adjustments based on us changing our entry positions, because we still need to do that in addition to the raise. When we spoke last week, you mentioned that those adjustments have already been included in these options. So I will arbitrarily then ask, tell me what a bus driver with five years' experience is making with the raise and with the salary adjustment? And if it's just the raise, then I'm going to have to ask the question, why didn't we adjust their salary from, to separate year one to year five?
I believe the only one that has the adjustments in it is option three.
Okay.
Because that was the Tazby model, and they came in and did the adjustments.
So then I would include or expect that to be part of the two, five, and seven, just so that we have a true measure of what that could look like. It can't be one or the other. And, and I, I appreciate Ms. Canoyer's concern, but I, I also want to still see the numbers. And so if there is something that's problematic with this, then either we put our heads together and figure out how we can resolve that problem, or we identify clearly, this isn't viable for whatever that reason might be. A lot of companies pay differentials. I don't see why we would be different than any of those companies that do that. So if there is an issue, then it's even deeper in terms of, I can only imagine if we have midpoint issues and see, I don't know. And that's something obviously we will need to tackle if we're going to move forward. So just a lot of questions about that.
Just to make sure I understand what you would like for the company, looking at option three, which is the Tazby model, puts us in a deficit of 12. So you would like the 12 plus the five, seven, and two?
I assumed all the options included the salary adjustment. To me, that was another critical part of it that we, that we do. If only one option has a salary adjustment, then, then that won't accomplish the goal because we still have higher wages coming in, and then we've not valued employees. And this could be extended teachers. I don't know. Transportation has brought this up to me, custodial staff has brought this up, AFT has brought this up. So I'm, I'm hearing it all, and I think there's merit to it. So every professional organization will do salary adjustments. I'm glad Tazby did, but I did expect that to be in all of the options. I'm surprised it's only in option three. So, and again, I know this is not monopoly money. This is real money we're dealing with here, but if we don't have those figures, we don't have a place to start and really look. If we, and I want to ask Mr. Atkins and Dr. Ball, take out those positions that are chronically unfilled. I mean, I know they're inflating our budget, so I, I don't know how many millions or how many thousands, but that is also another strategy to help balance our budget this year, as we do a review of the need of those positions. So like I said, just a lot of questions.
Sure. So one of the things that I see with taking out the positions that would be, that are unfilled right now, would be then the higher classroom size continues, you know, because...
I don't know where they are. I just have a feeling, based on previous meetings, that we have chronically unfilled positions.
Absolutely.
That are very vital.
But Mr. Macias, like, the positions that are unfilled aren't unnecessary, they're very necessary.
Well, but we're still getting...
And it's very painful that they're not filled. So I don't, I don't understand what you're saying.
We're still getting the job done though with it, because it may be unfilled, but we're still outsourcing that work, which means...
No.
Are we not doing the service at all?
So teacher, what it means is teachers have higher classroom size, you know, more kids in there. There's not aides in some of the classrooms where there should be aides. Aides are having to be split.
And, and I'm not talking about that. I'm glad you're clarifying, Ms. Rodriguez, thank you.
Okay. But I don't, I, you've lost me completely.
I'm talking about like, like, like when we use LSTs, I think, or I forget.
LSPs?
LSPs. Now, we outsource that. I think we have them in the budget. And again, that's just an example. I don't know. That's why I'm asking, because I need to be clear, we need to all be clear about what I'm talking about. So there are positions like that, speech therapy, things like that that are unfilled, that I know we have challenges getting filled, but that I believe we contract.
So we do have some in-house, but since we don't have sufficient, then we do have to go and contract.
And those, my thing is, we have them in the budget. Unless we don't, and we have a budget only for contracting them, because what we're doing is we have a contract budget, and then we have a budget in our compensation plan. And I think it's, that's where we can pull that from.
I, I don't think we have a lot of vacant LSSP positions in the budget.
Like I said, if I have that data here, I would know. I don't have it. I need to know, so that's what I'm trying to uncover. And LSPs is only one thing I'm aware of. There may be others that I might not be aware of. So I'm counting on you guys to come back and say, this is what it looks like.
And we want to provide you the information. So just to make sure that I, I'm, ask, you want us to bring you all the unfilled positions that we have right now, and to have a discussion if we could do away with them?
That they're chronically unfilled.
That they're unfilled, but to have a suspension for the year as we evaluate what our strategy is going to be. If we can't fill them, then obviously we're still getting the job done, and I'll use the transportation as another example. If you've come to us already to say, we want to outsource the, the UIL stuff, well, then guess what? That has to be part of our strategy now because we can't fill them. But now I don't want to have 105 bus drivers on the compensation plan when we're already putting half a million to outsource. Do you see what the logic is there? So if we're going to do it, then let's commit to this strategy, let's keep working on 105, and then we can get rid of that. But I'm only asking that we do this for a year because we don't know yet.
Right. And, and I'm not trying to give you a hard time, I'm truly trying to understand.
Sure, I, I totally understand.
So more, more like, right now, the positions that are unfilled, we freeze them, not hire them, and see what that would do.
Exactly, but not to Ms. Rodriguez's point, I'm glad she pointed it out. I'm not saying don't hire teachers. We need teachers regardless. We need teacher aides. In fact, there's a proposition here in the option to add teacher aides. I'm talking about other positions that we've been able to still do the job contracting the work, but we've not been able to put them in payroll. And if it's not a lot, then, then really I'm going up the wrong tree here. There's not much, but I don't know.
And I'll bring you those because I, I'm not trying to call you out, but I do think that I, there's some misconception here because the positions that we are not being able to fill right now are putting our staff in a hardship.
Well, again, the ones that we contract, are the ones that we have a contractual obligation and we get the job done some other way.
It's very, very few.
Well, if that's it, and it comes back, it's very few. We're dealing with a thousand bucks, and then I apologize, but we know.
And it's just, it would just be speech and LSSPs, very, very few.
And what's the salary for LSSP?
Off, off the top of my head, I do not know.
80,000?
Give me a second and I'll pull it up.
It's not important. This is just, this is just for conversation. If it's, if it's 80,000 and we have five of them, that's $400,000. That's sitting there, that we're still having to provide that service, and it's being done contractually somewhere.
I'm going to ask Mary just a few questions because she, she's over special ed. Mary, I do know, unless I'm wrong, and please call, say it again, we do have LSSPs on, on staff.
Yes, ma'am.
So we do have those on staff.
We contract for certain areas like occupational therapy in specialized cases, but that's not a whole group of students. That is a very specific need, and it's based on the need of the child. And that is not, we try to fill those needs, I'm sorry.
We try to fill the needs that we have, especially in the special ed department, based on the need of the child in their IEP. And so the majority of the time, we can fill it with staff that we have on hand, that are hired by Judson and are Judson ICE employees. However, there are some times we do have to bring in contracted, contracted personnel for that. But I, I can't give you a number right now. I can get that information if needed.
I just know we get the job done, but I also know if we have two buckets of revenue, our, our funding out there, we need to consolidate and reevaluate how we're going to move forward and still get the job done. And if it's a small amount, thank you, because that's actually something that's out there. We need to quantify to our community and our employees that we don't have this big budget that was unused, but now we'll know, and we can incorporate that in our strategy for the budget.
But even if we do have that big budget and we don't use it, at the end of the year, that money's still there. It's not like we're spending it in two places. So if, let's take your transportation thing, for example. Let's say that we don't get the 105 bus drivers and we contract out with the charter buses and use that money. There's still that money, it's still there in the fund balance. We didn't use it. It's not like, you know, it goes away. So in the end, it all washes out, and that's what a budget is, it's a prediction. You can't go in and say, to the line item, it's not going to change at all. And that, you know, that's why we do transfers and things like that. So I mean, I don't understand, I honestly don't understand your logic.
Well, the logic is that we pass a budget that's not inflated, and that's ultimately it. We, we are adding these positions to our budget. We're looking at decisions here that'll be maybe 20 million deficit budget, when really, we know 2 million is going to come back, and I'm giving an arbitrary example, 2 million is going to come back, then really we're only 18 million, not 20, because these positions go unfilled the whole year. So I want to be very specific about what our deficit looks like. And if we have chronic positions that are unfilled, then as a board, my, my opinion would be, we need to be then strategic with administration to find out why we can't fill them. And then the question that I think has merit is, do we need them? What is going on? If we don't fill them, do we need them? If we need them, then obviously we need to figure out how we're going to get them filled and, and think more strategically in terms of compensation and other strategies. But we don't know that. And what we're doing is looking at the numbers to see if we pass it. But if we can save a couple of million, then that, that helps the bottom line, and that's why I'm trying to...
And in a non-pandemic world, I could agree with you, but we're operating in a situation where the people to fill some of those positions may or may not be out there. And so if we, if, if we leave them open, then people will apply if the people show up. I just think that we're still operating kind of in the realm of the unknown. And so we may have to just say, okay, we, this is what we're setting as our budget, and what we're hoping is that this comes back to us, and we get those updates during the year that we can share with the community, you know, about, about those kinds of things. I just, it's not a regular world yet.
And I do take that into account, and like I mentioned earlier, if we have a strategy to still fill them, we know historically we haven't, we still need them. I say we still move forward with it. It's just my, my, my opinion. Obviously, we would talk about it collectively as a board, but we still work to fill them, and we have a amendment to the budget. So then, now whatever we need to do strategically, now we're filling them, but we can still pull them, but we can still pull from our fund balance that we already all know is pretty healthy at the moment. So, for the sake of passing a really strong budget, not going into 20 million in the hole, that's what I would like to do. Because that option still exists, Ms. Canoyer. We can still hire and pull in once we retain them. But right now, the history is we can't fill them.
So, going back to the question, this is rough numbers, okay?
Sure.
So, an LSSP coming in with first year, zero experience would make 79,860. And let's say somebody that has like 40 years would be at 108,460. And I did it by calculating 220 days. Their hour, I did their hourly rate. So, give or take, you know, they could be. So, maybe one of the things that I'm hearing is that at least one board member would like for us to figure out a budget with just the people that we truly have on staff right now, figuring out with that staff, with a raise with some of these things. And if we were to need more staff, then we go into the fund balance at that time.
I'm comfortable with that because, again, we're trying to pass a budget. We're trying to really look at increasing compensation. And I think that would be important because during this year that we're doing that, I'm not saying we do this forever, just this year. So, it gives us 365 days while we're coming to our next budget meeting to really figure out what are we going to do here.
And I don't, my figuring that, I would just like the disclaimer that most likely we would have to come back and go into the fund balance, whether, I wouldn't know if it's two months, three months, six months, because I do know right now, we have, just today I met with bus drivers that are doing two or three, you know, routes.
And Dr. Ball, you mentioned that there's not a lot of positions. So, I don't know how many LSP, LSPs we have, LSSPs, we have in the budget, but whatever that is, it's inflating our compensation number. So, if it's 20 positions, 15 positions, and we only have eight, I mean, that's seven positions at at least 80,000 that you're mentioning is what we would have towards the budget.
I know. And, and, and I hope that everybody knows I'm not trying to be difficult.
No, I appreciate you trying to get clarity.
Yeah. I guess me knowing some of the things that are down the pipe, I hear from our staff that we have more students that we need to test for special ed so, and dyslexia. So, I know, just using the LSSP as an example, that isn't a position that I could ever do less with. That's not.
Hire them, but you haven't historically been able to. We contract that work out. Again, that's the whole point. I know we're still doing the job, but I don't want them as a LSP, SFP, as a Judson employee. And we can't fill it, but we still have an obligation to do the job. So, we go into our contracting budget and we pay for it there to get the job done. We may be paying more for that contracting job. So, one of the questions, do we pay more here for the actual Judson positions so that we can recruit them? Or do we just continue to contract and then that's our budget? But at least it's not in the contracting budget and on the Judson employee compensation budget. I do see them as distinct. Ms. Canoyer's point of it washes out at the end of the day is fine, but right now, when we pass this budget, we're passing it for 15, I don't know, for 15 positions for LSSPs. And we're still going to pass this budget for contract, whatever the contractual budgets are. So, we're passing two budgets with LSSPs in it. We only need one. And if I'm wrong, tell me I'm wrong.
It's not that you're wrong. It's that I'm trying to be proactive. So, let's say, I say, you know what, we, I'm not going to be able to hire these, so I'm going to contract them, okay? But how, but if I can find them, then you want, you would want me to go to do an amendment and say, now, let's take it out of the fund balance, another million dollars.
But if it's only five positions or seven, it's not a million dollars at all.
Yeah, we're making up numbers.
It's clearly less than that. But yes, because we have budget amendments all the time. It's not like we've never tapped into our fund balance for any reason. So, we've done that all the time.
The majority of the, and Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, the majority of the budget amendments that we do are to move them for different functions and not to go into fund balance.
I don't know.
It's a transfer and not a.
For clarity, once you're old, maybe.
It's two tiers. It's two tiers. The goal is for us to evaluate the need and our strategies in getting that need done. The other goal is to try to have a leaner budget that we pass and one that doesn't have any inflationary numbers added to it. That's basically goal one and two, in hopes that when you come back and you tell me all these positions are what we're having to contract out, will be impactful for us to not be so much in a deficit. That's ultimately it, Ms. Canoyer.
When you say it, how do we do need, how do we do the positions?
Yeah. I mean, because right now, like I had mentioned with the, this position in particular, we contract and we pay more for the contracted services than we do for the position in the books. So, that's what I'm talking about. And again, that's only one example. I will defer to you. You guys know more than I do about where we contract services. When I look at a program review and I ask for what we're spending on contractual services, I will now know what we're spending contracted services for and ask the question again, based on, we have personnel to do the job, but we're contracting. Why?
So, I, I will bring back the open positions that we have so we can look at them for need. I will bring back if any of those open positions could be contracted and then look and see what positions we do contract.
And to, to Ms. Rodriguez's very good point, I'm not looking to not fill teacher aid positions. I want more teacher aides. I want more teachers. That, that would be, I wouldn't bring those here because they still need to be taken care of. But, but it's the other positions that might be. And like I said, I don't know.
Right. For now, I think it's best that I bring them all.
I mean, I'm not going to support eliminating or not hiring teachers.
Right. I just, I think that, so you could see, I'll see them all.
Sure. I guess so. But that's just more work. I'm trying to not pound you with more work.
I know.
It's up to you.
And by passing up your budget based on the resource that we have on hand right now, not the one that we need for collaborations, that's the goal.
Yeah.
And following that judgment segment, why? Like, what's the point?
The point is to encourage some honest conversations about what we're doing to fill these positions and also to ensure that we are doing our best strategies to fill them. And Dr. Ball has been pretty clear that every position is needed. Well, then if we chronically can't fill them, then there's something, something is disconnected there. And for the sake of this year only, we exercise a freeze in those roles because we're contracting them anyway. And if we can fill them, then we've, we've cleared the hurdle and we've figured out what the barrier is and we fill them. And then we put them in the budget next year.
Can we still get to an acceptable budget for you if we happen to have a poor honest conversation? We removed some of which may consider unnecessary, but still have a budget that reflects actually removing some of the bit of clutter fluffing purposes.
Yeah, I'd be fine with what we come up with. I just, honestly, I just don't have that information. And for the sake of all of this and Dr. Ball doing her best to get clarity on it, I'm just trying to get that information. And.
We have that discovery now if we look at all the positions.
And if it's not even sizable, if we're looking at 250,000, I'd be like, we just forget it then, just keep them filled. But I have no way to gauge if we're looking at a million or if I'm looking at 20,000. I don't know. And so, but a million for me would be sizable, especially if we're trying to not go into 20 million in our fund balance.
Then we'd pass a, a true.
A balanced budget, but that's what, that's the goal. I mean, Mr. Diaz, to your point, I would be okay with still adding it and then just, because we're going to pull it from fund balance either way because I'm saying, but this history has shown, we haven't filled them. So, more than likely, we're going to still have some challenges filling them.
I'm going to give you a reflection because it feels like what you're really intending is that we have an honest conversation about the underlying reasons that we have these chronic vacancies, right? And maybe not so much the issue about the budget. Is that kind of fair?
I would say it's twofold still. It's still twofold. I mean, it'll prompt that honest discussion, but it will also tell us what we're spending. I'd like to know, again, I'm going to say, keep saying, program review, if I knew what we were contracting and all that, that would help me know the scope of what we're contracting, which I don't know right now. So, just lacking information.
Right. But I also think that it has not been historically like this in the past where we couldn't fill so many positions. This is, this is new. You know, this isn't something that Judson ISD or other school districts have had an issue with. This is something that's new.
Three-year, five-year trends are always helpful in kind of exposing it. So.
Other suggestions or ideas?
I'd love where we were.
We'll go back. Okay. Let's, let's go back. Okay. So. Right. We had just finished the different scenarios. Well, let's go back to. Yep. We talked about seven and eight. We could go back and talk about more in depth of, you know, the options. You have more information there specifically, more of a narrative form about option B, option, you know, option 5B, 5A, 5B. Then you, you have option six.
What is, what's it? When you make a budget, how many hours do you budget for a bus driver to drive in a year? Like, what's the driver? Is it 20 hours, 30, 52 a year?
They're guaranteed six, but most of them drive probably eight. Some of them probably drive 10 a day.
Per day? Okay. Because I'm just trying to, to think about like, what is the impact of that particular line item when we make these changes? Because the changes are very small except for one of the, one of the proposals here, which is option four.
Option four, yeah. That's the largest.
And, okay, that's, that's all I can be in this minute, but. And how many weeks per year are we budgeting for them to drive six?
They are typically paid on a 187-day deal. And then, of course, summer school and summer hours are additional.
Okay. And they opt into that?
Yes, ma'am. They opt into that.
Maybe we, we could go to this page, Bill. And then, of course, at any time, I may ask any questions, but we'll just let Bill continue with the presentation. If anybody has any questions, we can go to that.
So, again, I proposed a budget. I'm using option seven for the general fund budget. This again would be the 1% raise, the teacher incentive, and the 3% para auxiliary raise, 2% professional, and the bus driver allotment and the SR allotment. Again, you can see we're at an 18.8 million dollar deficit. Child nutrition, again, they are just about a balanced budget depending on food cost. And then, of course, we would have a balanced debt service budget to bring to you. And with that, I'll take questions, comments, requests for information. The 7%, 5%, 4% with the adjustments, I'm going to try and have it by Friday, but with the adjustments added, that may add a little difficulty to
Well, I'll say that I personally am inclined not to do the additional aides because I think that would give us a whole bunch of positions we couldn't fill at this time. And I would rather take that kind of money to put into raises rather than looking at the aides. And speaking as a classroom teacher, an aide gave me one more thing I had to worry about. And.
Were you a control freak?
Yes, ma'am. Anybody who knows me can tell you that. I honestly don't know that we'd get the bang for our buck for that. I think that should be a strategic target where we look at scores, where we look at classrooms that have, where we're deliberately focusing our special ed kids who are being mainstreamed and into those classrooms and target certain areas and campuses where that's a definite need rather than a blanket, you know, all across the district. So, for me, that's not something that I want to consider. And again, I still have the heartburn about making big jumps in some parts of the salary schedule and, and small jumps in the other. I, I don't think, I think I understand Mr. Masias's motives for that, but I also think about the impact that that gives to the salary schedule and also it gives to the teachers and the employees. I say teachers because that's my, that was my perspective in the classroom. What does that say that they're not as valuable because they have more years of experience or less years of experience? So, I have concerns with the perception that that would come, would send to our employees. So, those are my opinions.
What about the incentives? Does anybody have comments on those?
I like the bus driver incentive. I think maybe it needs to be even a little higher. If we really want to fill those positions so that we can get out of that, using so many charters and get back to our employees in terms of giving them those hours, everybody's fighting for bus drivers. It's a huge need.
Yes, ma'am. So, we will, we will look at that.
Are we having difficulty with child nutrition workers as well? Not so much?
Not as much.
Because I know, I've heard from other people in other districts that that's a big issue for them.
Going up to $14 last year really helped us fill our custodial. I think the last time I was there, a couple of weeks ago, that I think we had two custodial positions open in the district.
When I go and look at the positions that are open, you know, because I do periodically, the, the majority is, there are some teachers in hard-to-fill areas. There's also some in curriculum, academic deans, that kind of thing. I don't see a whole lot in terms of positions that, that wouldn't be fillable if there's people out there. We know that there's been a mass exodus from education. Teachers retired on time instead of hanging on. A lot of people left because, especially when we were, everybody was virtual and they were trying to teach from home while their kids were at home trying to learn from home. So, we had a lot of people leave there and some of those people aren't coming back.
Yes.
And so, and I'm preaching to the choir here, I know, because we, you all know that. But I think maybe some of the community people don't understand that those people left, they're not coming back. And so, there's a, a smaller pool that everybody's trying to, to hire from. And the more attractive we can make those really hard-to-fill positions, I think the, the better off we are.
And we have two job fairs coming up. So, we are pushing hard to fill our positions.
Would you mind, which one did you say in favor?
I didn't say which one. I said, I don't, I'm, I don't. I'm not in favor of. No. I'm not in favor of 5A and B with the aides.
Okay.
So, for clarity, adding aides is literally adding head count?
Yeah.
Okay. And what do aides do?
What's the teaching aid them to?
I know the answer.
So, the aide support classroom teachers mainly right now, we have them in the much lower grade for pre-K and then also in some of our special ed units. This proposal, though, included either A, having them for third through fifth, or kinder through second.
Did we consider adding the aides to the, to the grade levels that are aligned to our board goals?
We, we just brought two different proposals. So, we could align them to our, our board goals, yes.
So, then if we had aides in the classroom in the grade levels that are aligned to our board goals.
To be like third and seventh, I believe.
Then that would add more resource to ensure that we meet those goals theoretically?
Another way to get there, though, could be to add teacher head count to produce class size. Okay. Yep. And that, and to be clear, aides are required in certain classes like pre-K and special education because of the ratios that are required to adult children in those classrooms.
Correct. And while having aides reduces the ratio of adult to student, it doesn't, it doesn't make it more teacher. An aide is not. the ratio of adult to student, it doesn't, it doesn't make it more teacher, and aide is not a teacher. They have a valuable place, but they don't do the kinds of work that teachers do in terms of planning, grading, instruction. So for your reference, Mr. Diaz, Mr. Macias asked for the three and five, and I suggested that if we really want to work towards our goals, we should work with our K2 to build up to where we're going to be in five years. Because if we work hard to decrease the gaps that we have from the pandemic and those primary grades, and when they get to three, five, seven, those grades, then we don't have those things to backfill. So that was my suggestion to look at.
But you still don't like that suggestion?
I still don't think that's the best use of the money. More teachers, yes. I don't think, I think we're going to have a whole bunch of, we'd have however many it was, 165 or 233 positions that we couldn't fill. We have classroom aide positions open now, you know, for special ed and pre-K that we can't fill.
So a better use of dollars with even teachers, but we can't hire teachers anyways?
Yeah. Our goal is to hire more teachers for next year.
Do we pay for potential bus drivers to get their CDL?
Yes, we have a trainer on staff that, that works with them. Yes, ma'am.
Can we cover any costs?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to just add too that in looking at the options with the teacher aides, I'm agreeable that K through two won't work. The goal was to identify support in elementary. We know the third and fifth grade are are very important grades for STAR testing. I do like Mr. Diaz's suggestion of seventh, because I also feel like our middle school does have a need. But as I mentioned earlier, I'm also agreeable to just identifying those campuses that are overcrowded as well. And if it means that it reduces that 165 count, that's better. Now, I did informally poll teachers, I've been asked at teacher unions, what they would want in the classroom. And remember, we did that survey, and I asked, what would you want in lieu of compensation? Most of them said teacher aides would do wonderfully. They would support their work in the classroom. I'm agreeable to expending money on any resource. Human resources like teacher aides or anything else that will make their job better to reach each student. And so I don't have any other suggestions other than teacher aides. But clearly, we can, if we can hire the teachers, then we can reduce teacher classroom sizes, which is the other goal. Hopefully, we can maybe do that, too, but, but teachers are already, are in the salary. We already have them. We just need to fill them. This expenditure was a additional commitment that I want to eventually draw from ESSER funds. I eventually want to see, again, what we are focusing on, and some of our technology stuff, I want to pull it. I want to put it in the classroom. And so when we made million-dollar purchases for technology out of ESSER, I kept thinking, what's that going to do to move the actual, right now, today, and help students? So once I take a look at the ESSER fund from last Friday's note, I'll be prepared to make some suggestions for discussion. But I do feel that's where we're going to need to do some adjustments based on it, because I also need to understand our technological, why are we spending this money from ESSER? Is it because we never had the money from this part? And if that's the case, then the goal is to improve student achievement, close that gap. I want it used there. So I'll make my argument about technology funds later. But that's the idea for my colleagues to hear, that we now have a price, we have a price tag now. We know it'll be $4.9 million if we put 165 teacher aides in third and fifth grade. Now, let's see what seventh grade to align to our board goals and see if it's doable, and then take that down to where we have overcrowding. And our, only do seventh grade. I mean, it could be just middle school, because we're actually behind in grade level for math. So maybe that's where we offer more support, but the board, I feel we should do something to support that.
Other comments or suggestions?
I have a question. For Dr. Duhart, talking to Chief Transformation Officer, Cecily. So in order to get us to the board goals, do you all feel like the aides would be valuable in that mission? Or what are your thoughts on that? From your leadership positions?
To get to the board goals in, for third grade and seventh grade?
Yes.
I believe that it would be. I think that this year has shown us that having class sizes at 30 or at 26 in a third grade, classroom number 24, is not conducive to an optimal learning environment. And so reducing class sizes and providing, even if you have an aide in there, they're still splitting, if it's in a class of 30, they're still splitting 15 kids apiece. But if we can reduce the class size down to 24, that having less kids, six kids, even six kids, will make a world of difference, even in a middle school. And so I just believe that if we need to stack our schools with more teachers, fill those vacancies and work towards reducing our class sizes so that we can get to every kid.
I agree with that statement. I feel that even though research might say that smaller class sizes doesn't always lead to better instruction unless the instruction is specifically targeted. So I'll preface with that. With the event of the pandemic, we have a need to greater provide more differentiation, which is truly very hard for a teacher to do. I know in books and in theory it says, you know, differentiate, differentiate. But the reality is, at smaller class sizes, if we could fill those vacancies, would be essential. I still believe in the benefit of an aide, again, if the aide knows how to properly deliver and help differentiate for specific populations that might need additional help change, like bilingual aides would be very beneficial. So depending on specific grade levels or on population, but ideally, the best scenario would be, in my opinion, a smaller class size ratio with more teachers if we do that.
And the reality right now in that class of 30, I just want to add this to the team, is that you could have a class of 30, but 10 of those kids are special ed. And so you would need, or 504. And so you would need an aide in those type of studies in order to meet the needs of the students with the accommodations that they need in order to be successful.
So would you say that those type of classrooms would be those people customers to extra support? So we should look at?
And we already have them in our special ed classrooms. We do have aides in there for the extra support. But when you start talking about our English language learners that are in seventh grade, we don't have aides that are, we have push-in model, but when you're doing that, then when you're talking about a class of 30 and you have seven ELs, and then you have five, 504, it begins to begin to be a lot of accommodations that a teacher will need to do. So if you can reduce the number, then you can be.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Diaz? Ms. Rodriguez?
So just, so I'm understanding what I'm looking at here, because there's a lot of, lot of options. I'm trying to understand what the difference between each one is. So in the models where we modeled out what it would look like to add the aides, that results then in more likely a 1% raise for teachers. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. That's what we have. We could go back and recalculate something different.
Right, right, okay.
I'd rather put that money in salaries for teachers. Ms. Canoria? I just, I said I'd rather put that money in salaries for teachers. Raises. Mr. Shaw, any questions?
I don't have any questions. I'm more drawn looking at option seven. Again, as a retired educator, I think that we should have more teachers than aides. However, I do know that, and I've had aides in my classroom before, because of the student population and those that were 504 or special ed, that's understood. But I think what I, I'm looking more toward raises than incentives for teachers. More toward raises than incentives, and the incentives would go to bus drivers.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Keen?
I'm in favor of raises, more so than adding the assistance. I would like to see the fund more so with the paid. And. And incentives with, yeah, bus drivers.
Okay. Ms. Eaton?
I would like to see payments. But I, I like the idea of step raises. I understand what Ms. Canoria's point is. But for this to happen for the one time raised this way, I don't think that it would hurt the world that much. Because I think everybody is looking at what is going on, you know, across the spectrum, and they see, you know, what's happening. Because it, it's to not, to have somebody working at a job for 15 years and a new person comes in and they're making just 30 cents less than them. And they just started. That's not a good picture. Because what do I have to look forward to? Even to the person that got hired. You know, now they're looking at going, hey, you've been here 15 years and I'm, you know? And so why would they want to stay? Because they have nothing to look forward to, you know? And if we can't get the kids to school, why do we need the teachers? Why do we need any of it? You know? Why do you even need to go? Can't get them here.
So more of the staggered type?
I think so.
Mr. Macias? Somebody passed, left you out, I apologize.
No, I know. I've spoken a great deal, and I appreciate you going back and forth with trying to understand what the situation is. No, you have your work cut out. I still need to look at those numbers. Again, I'm strategically looking at adding personnel that will help. We are in a tough environment, so I'm going to request that if we ultimately come back without teacher aides, I'm willing to spend money to help our teachers in the classroom. So there has to be alternatives. I appreciate the raises part. I do want that to be ultimately. If we get to a point where, in my opinion, we can't do both, then naturally raises would be the emphasis to put on. But again, I didn't want to leave these budget discussions without some implementation of strategic support. And so that's important to me, and I know to those teachers that I have spoken to. So we just got to get it done. Right now, I think, based on what we've talked about, teacher aides are going to be easier to hire than teachers. So, and that's why I emphasized on the aides part. Naturally, teachers are first line, but we passed a waiver, so I'm hoping now that we can fill those for this year. But that's all important. I have, Mr. Atkins, each teacher aide is 30,000. Is that with benefits?
With benefits, yes.
Okay. So. Yeah, so I'm going to be looking at that possibility. What we haven't discussed in all of this, and again, this is why we have budget meetings, and they have to be very detailed. We have to address the safety issues on our campuses. And so safety, we've used to have hall monitors. We eliminated them. What extra step, and that's part of the strategy, are we going to do to ensure that we have safety on campuses? Even mean that, do we, do we look at filling our police vacancies? Do we have them stay on campus? All those type of things that need to be discussed, and we haven't discussed them yet. So that's another add-on, but that's compensation, that's salary.
I have a question for you. When you said hall monitors, you're only talking about high school?
I'm talking about high school, middle school.
So prior to me getting here, we had them, then one year we did away with them, and then we added them back. So we have, we have added them back. There've also been positions that people come and go.
Yeah, it's hard to keep filled. And I'm, I'm thinking we may need to actually hire off-duty Bear County. We may need to actually increase our presence strategically again, because we have that budget and money for this. We just have to consider options. I just want, at the end of the day, to know that we've tried to address the safety issue on our campus. And I can't say that we've, we've talked about it yet even. So that's just to put another wrinkle in what I think we need to do to really help give some assurance of safety for our teachers.
So I think that these have been very healthy and good discussions, because ultimately, I know that that's what we all want. We're all on the same team. We all want the same, you know, for our kids to be successful, for them to be safe, and to treat our employees well. So I know that we're all on the same team for that. So this is great information. Bill, do you want to add anything, or do you need? So we'll.
I have one more thing to add.
Sure, sure.
The one thing is, I'm not a big fan of the incentives. But, Mr. Atkins, to take Ms. Canoria's point about her concern about the staggeredness of what I'd like to see, if you can get that 7% raise and convert it over to an incentive, what would that look like? So you put $1,000 on here, twice, right? $1,000 if they stay, and another $1,000. So if that $2,000 equates more than 7%, spell that out. Tell me what that increase would mean per the employee, because it may be a 15% increase in their salary if we're giving them that incentive. So I want to see both, because at the end, I'll make a decision on, for me, if I want to do the raise per percentage or if I will want to do the incentive, and it still has the same outcome. You still have the same bottom line being met. But I would say, we haven't talked about custodial staff. That's the other part of wanting to see what that would look like. And if we have 77 bus drivers that will be impacted by this, how many custodial staff will be impacted if we do the adjustments and so forth? I don't see those incentives in there for them. So not to exclude them, if we're going to do it, every employee in the same thing, because I want to make sure that we're not missing employees in this effort, so.
So just to clarify, you want us to look at what percentage the incentives that we currently have would be for a bus driver?
Based on your plan right now?
Yes.
Yeah, based on your plan. If we did not go with, for example, a 7% raise. And I only say that because Ms. Canoria brought that point, and she's concerned about it. So we need to spell that out, too. We need to see what that looks like, why you may have some concerns with it, and is it easier just to go with an incentive for that segment and still go with the percentages on administration and teachers?
And then you also want to look at an incentive for custodial?
The same blanket goal of supporting our employees that are on the lower end of our pay scale, same idea. Because at this point, we're leaving out those employees, those paras, those custodial staff, that. Yeah, the auxiliary. The goal is to give them a little more, because they're hurting more than some of our teachers and some of our administrators. So that's not being included. You put a great plan for transportation in that area, but you excluded. The 7% is designed to capture all of it. That's what's lacking right now. So, like I said, Dr. Ball, I'll say it on record to my colleagues, I do think the 19th is way too quick to get this plan passed. We still have another six weeks to consider it before the end of June. I'd like to be very transparent with our community, what we're thinking, those that listen can hear. But with all this detail still lacking, and poor Mr. Atkins, I mean, he's a tired man. There's a lot of information that we'll need next meeting, and then we're supposed to pass it by the 19th. I'm just putting some caution. There is no need, we have to rush if we push into June, after graduations, and we have more time. But it's just a recommendation. I know you want to pass it by the 19th, but that may be something we need to consider.
Other districts have passed all, this compensation plans already, and so we have people who are looking to leave. If we leave it very late, then we're looking at trying to get more people. So the sooner the better.
Yeah, I am glad you said that, too, because I've been gauging, and I did, I did ask a number of districts on why they do that and so forth to get a better understanding. Some districts have had more budget meetings than we've had. Some districts have. Some districts have fiscal years that end in August, September, and they start. So they have to pass it early, because their, their timeline's different than ours. If we can convey what our expectations are, that's fantastic. I think it may have the same impact. But to rush a plan with all these questions that we have, and again, Mr. Atkins has a heavy burden to lift right now, I want to make sure we look at all of it. Like I said, we haven't even talked about safety. We haven't talked about other aspects that impact compensation. So I just don't want to feel rushed, and I think that's something that we have historically have always passed our budgets from June. Last year was an anomaly, so it's not like.
It's been three, about three years that we've done this.
Three straight years? We haven't, from 2010 to 2017, we haven't. So, and maybe 18. So regardless, we've been able to do that and been okay.
Right. We will continue to bring information until the, the, the board feels that it's the right thing to do.
Sure. It's just my opinion, my caution, but thank you.
And we're not going to rush it, but.
I hope you were done.
That's okay. That is, that's okay. That's not. No, don't you worry. Don't you worry. It's not a problem. Not a problem. No, yes, ma'am. Go right ahead.
I appreciate that though, Ms. Eaton, because it made me be aware of what I just did. I did. We do need to go back to item three on the agenda, because it is a consent item.
Yes, ma'am.
Consider and take possible, uh, take action regarding approving the payment for the Freeman Coliseum for the commencement exercises for Judson High School, Wagner High School, Veterans Memorial, and Judson Early College. Is there a motion for this item?
I move we approve the payment.
I second that motion for payment for.
So we'll do a roll call vote. What say you, Ms. Eaton?
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go right ahead.
Before we, before we vote on it. Um, I recall we had requested, at least I requested, I should say, what the cost was with the Alamo Dome. And you, you said you would look into that too. I trust it's double what we're paying for Freeman, right?
It's in the Friday notes.
Oh, really? You're coming. You can just call me, because I'm just bad about Friday notes.
That's okay.
But what was the cost then?
Oh, gosh, let me look it up.
All right. For, for the record, we're here now.
Yes, give me one second. Not a problem. Let me look at my. Oh, let me look at my Friday notes. I, I got them right here.
One thing I will say, as Ms. Canoria rolls her eyes, is that I like to be in transparent mode always. Even if it's in Friday notes, I still want to talk about it. I want the community to know we've addressed it.
And I don't, and I don't mind. I'm not trying, I hope I can say or do that.
No, that's fine, but just know, I will ask a question in public, just for the sake for the public to hear, regardless if I know the answer, because I think transparency is key.
Matter of record.
Yep.
And all I needed was just a few minutes. I just, it's not as quick as everybody else. But give me one second and I'll get that for you.
I have it up. Is it, oh.
If you have, if you found it before me, Ms. Eaton, if that's okay, Ms. Eaton?
I'm to the picture of you, the further down. Growth and planning, here, here you go.
I, I found it. I just need to look at the right Friday notes, because.
Oh, it wasn't in just this past one?
No, I think it was in the previous one, because he'd asked me a while back. So give me one second.
I, I really did like the Alamo Dome. That was all I was thinking.
And that, and we're going to explore that. So the Alamo Dome, and remember, this was in 2018. So I'm sure costs have gone up. So back in 2018, Judson High School held it there. It was $18,502.
Just for Judson High School?
Yes, sir. When Wagner held it there, it was for $18,519. That included the rental, the internet, the wanding, the fire marshal, the stage, the radio, security, and technicians. So for 2019, Judson High School was $22,589. Wagner was $21,237, and Veterans was 2,000, I mean, $22,464. So in the future, what we will do is price both of those out, also look at availability dates.
And I'll commend you. The Freeman Coliseum is 5,000, if I recall. What's the cost per, per graduation?
So for Judson High School was $22,500?
No, I'm talking about at the Freeman Coliseum now, compared.
That's the price.
Oh, that's right now, for Freeman Coliseum?
Oh, sorry. That's, that was in. Yeah, that was 2019.
But what, this is just item.
Yeah, let me go back now to, do you have it pulled up?
It's 20.
Perfect. Okay.
It's what, what is it?
It's 29,000.
At the Freeman?
So it's only what we're asking for.
Okay, so we're asking for 119, so, so there might not be a big difference from the Alamo Dome to the Freeman Coliseum.
There might not be, but we'll research it. The price I have is for 2018.
So yes, please do that, because again, I did prefer the Alamo Dome. I thought it was much more intimate. It felt, they dimmed the lights. There were just a lot more nuances I liked about it over the Freeman.
Right. The only thing that, I don't say the only thing, but one of the biggest things that I have heard from people is they like the convenience of the parking at the Freeman. That, so.
They still charge there, don't they?
They charge, but it's, it's easier to have that big parking lot right there in front of, except for the Alamo Dome. Sometimes it's not as easy to find the, the parking.
And they charge it.
So it's, it's, it's one of those things. You won't, you'll find people that love the Freeman and people that love the Alamo Dome.
I'm not a big fan of Freeman. You might as well be honest. I just don't like that venue. But we, you need a price point, and so if the Alamo Dome is less than Freeman, I would like to go there.
I personally like just Rutledge, but that's just me.
Rutledge?
So we blow away.
Yeah, we had a rain issue last year. I thought that would very, just dissuade people from wanting to do it outside. I mean, we, we had to run because of the rain last year on Rutledge.
I know. I just like it. It, it, it comes with history, I think.
You're not, you're not wrong. Thank you. Just, that's all the questions I have.
Anytime.
Is there any more discussion on this item? Then we'll take a roll call vote. Ms. Eaton? Uh, on the, the costs for the. Yeah or nay?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Chetonya King, aye.
Suzanne Canoria, aye.
Jennifer Rodriguez, aye.
Mr. Diaz?
Rafael Diaz, aye.
Mr. Macias?
Yes.
Renee Pichelle, aye. Vote passes unanimously. Is there anything else that anyone needs to add? If not, this meeting is adjourned at 7:00.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.